Good evening, welcome to the December 21st, 2017 Board and Conference Meeting of the School District of Haverford Township. Would we rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda this evening is Public Session. Before I run into Public Session, I'd just like to make a brief announcement. At the last meeting, Mr. Hopkins announced that he would be resigning and he has submitted his official resignation effective 12/31 of this year. In terms of the process to replace him, the Board will then have 30 days from the date of his official resignation to appoint someone to take his place and serve out a two-year term. We'll be looking for any interested parties to submit a resume with a cover letter and to also include responses to a group of four questions that will be posted on the district website tomorrow. And the resume, cover letter, and written responses to the questions will be due back to the district no later than January 8th.
Could you read the questions?
I think we'll just let them go to the website.
They'll be available on the website tomorrow.
Tomorrow, alright. So, anything you can do to publicize the fact that we're looking for qualified candidates will be appreciated. The first, we have one couple that's asked to speak on Public Session, Dr. Russell and Rita Phillips. If you could come to the microphone and you'll have three minutes and then we'll give you the hook. And we also need you to just state your name and address for the public record.
Sure, my name is Russ Phillips. My address is 239 Valley Ridge Road, Haverford, PA. So, the reason for my appearance is that everybody is aware with the passage of the federal tax bill, we've lost the deductions for state and local taxes. So there have been many articles in various publications suggesting that people who are interested in doing so prepay their taxes for 2018 by December 31st, 2017. We have done so through Delaware County, but when my wife Rita called Haverford Township, the school district, we were refused the opportunity to prepay those taxes. Now, we feel this whole thing is changing the rules in the middle of the game. We've lived in this township just five years. We did not raise our children here, but we are public school supporters and we were actually a little bit misled about the taxation rate in this district. And we've been surprised but haven't complained that we've been paying around $20,000 a year in school taxes. So, all we're asking is that our prepayment be accepted. I don't care if it stays in a drawer for six months because people say that, we've been told, the computers can't accept the check. Well, how about people accepting the check? We feel we've helped out the school district by merely living here and paying our taxes. Can't you please help us by arranging to accept our prepayment?
Sure. So, the matter for us is that the mechanisms that go into place for calculating what the taxes for 2018 would be do not occur until later in our school year. And then also collecting a tax in 2017 that would be applicable for someone to claim that for 2018, we're questioning the advice that people are being given, that that would be allowable, that you'd be allowed to pay, prepay, and have that attributed to the 2017 year.
Well, we're not asking to pay the full amount, which will be higher for 2018 than it was for 2017. How about just accepting the amount that we paid last year, put it toward our future bill? Other municipalities are doing this. I realize that it is up to each municipality to decide this, but I can't really see any reason why you wouldn't help out people that want to prepay, put the money in a drawer, put the money in a Vanguard account, and collect interest on it for six months. It makes sense for you to have our money, actually. And is...
Can I make one further explanation regarding municipal versus school district taxation? The school district operates on a fiscal basis and therefore, we don't set our millage until June of 2018. And so it's an exercise in speculation at this point in time. Hold on. But municipalities, on the other hand, operate on, municipalities, townships, and counties operate on a calendar year. And so that's perhaps why you get different treatment in attempting to prepay taxes to those entities as opposed to school districts. Because our understanding that school districts across the county are responding to these requests indicating that they're not accepting prepayments, we don't have a mechanism to accept those prepayments. It has not occurred and neither the school code or the taxing statutes provide the school district with that mechanism. They provide that the district sets a budget, sets a millage rate, and then issues their tax bills as of July 1 of the next fiscal year. And of course, I know you understand that. And that's what puts us in a different situation than perhaps the municipality, the township and the county.
Well, I do appreciate that, but why not accept an amount of money that would be put toward whatever that taxation eventually is? And you can have it. It would help us out if you had it early, that's all. Even, I mean, no mechanism, keep a list, you know? I mean, it's, how hard is it?
I'm not the business manager, so I can't answer that. But I do know that, I understand that it has never been our practice to accept prepayments.
I believe it, but there's never been a situation like this before either.
And we find ourselves facing that question without much guidance. We were hoping for some guidance from the...
Greg, wouldn't there be an administrative side to this? Presume that you gave us an amount that wasn't exactly equal to what your tax rate would be in 2018. We'd have to look at what you gave us, what you actually should pay in 2018, and then go back to you and say, okay, you owe us 20 bucks more. I mean, that's an administrative exercise, too.
Well, okay. It is, it is, but, you know, anybody who runs a business does that.
I mean, certainly thank you, you know, for raising this. And I think part of the problem, as you said, is that the rules have changed in midstream and unfortunately have changed, you know, with nine days left in the year. If this, you know, if this tax bill had passed a couple of months ago, perhaps there would have been enough discussion in Harrisburg to provide us with a vehicle and some guidance. But, as you know, it happened yesterday. So, you know, I certainly thank you for your property taxes and I'm not by any means, you know, I mean, you know, I wish we could do what you're asking, but it just sounds like right now we don't have the capability to handle it.
Larry, just one thought. The bank where, who do we use where you can, you go and pay your taxes? Santander or who?
TD Bank.
Right. Would, trying to be a little creative here and responsive to your veteran, for those that would wish to do it, could they set up, say, an escrow account where you could go and rather than deposit to us, deposit to them and they could hold the money?
I don't know.
This sort of calls for outside the box thinking.
I'm not a tax lawyer, but it does raise the question, if you pay an amount to the district prior to the district issuing the tax bill, is that really the payment of taxes? And I don't know the answer to that. To the extent that we get guidance that contradicts any of what I'm saying tonight, next week, we'll certainly publicize this.
Alright, I like your idea.
You know, there might be an easier way to do it. And that way, the administrative burden doesn't fall on us. You've paid the money. It's there. We get the money after July 1st. We may have to come back to you and, you know, make an adjustment depending on...
You might want to consult with your tax, with your tax advisor on it.
Well, I did and, you know, he said some municipalities are, or, well, he didn't say school district, he did say municipalities.
Because they've issued their tax bills, right?
Yeah, okay. Well, they're out in January.
Yeah, shortly.
Yes, well...
And we have, we've had other inquiries, similar inquiries. You're, you know, you're the only folks who made the time to come here tonight, but there are other folks who have asked the same question in the last...
If you got any guidance in the next nine days, get back to us, please.
We will communicate that.
If you put the money in escrow, you've got millions of dollars theoretically getting interest in, you know, that you're collecting six months' worth.
Unfortunately, in the strange world of school finance, what makes sense doesn't, isn't always possible.
Thank you for having us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak this evening? Hearing none, could we take roll for this public?
You're welcome. No, I'm just...
I'm still learning.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. Dr. Alan Stuck.
Present.
Dr. Klein. Mr. Fleischer. Mr. Hopkins.
Here.
Ms. Larson.
Here.
Dr. Martin.
Here.
Ms. Minji.
Present.
Mr. Sinto.
Present.
Mr. Feinberg.
Here.
Okay. When do we want to do student reps? Do we want to do them now? Would you guys like to do your presentations now or would you like to sit through a wonderful presentation on enrollment projections for, how long Phil? Forty minutes?
I don't know. Not up to me.
Why don't you go ahead and introduce yourselves?
Weigh that decision heavily.
We're all ears.
Hi, I'm Julia Bird and I'm an eighth grader at Haverford Middle School and thank you for letting me present tonight. We will be celebrating Haverford Loves Week this week. Our student council will be leading our school community in a collective effort to combat some negative events in our world. We will commit to focusing our energy on celebrating positive thinking and actions. We invite all students and staff to stand united for love over hate. Our next Student Wellness Day is scheduled for January 12th. We will focus our teaching and learning on inclusivity. We will be working together to learn about what we can do individually and collectively to make our school community a more welcoming place for staff, students, and families. We are excited to be hosting our second annual MLK Day of Service on January 15th. We will be partnering with Rise Against Hunger to purchase and package 18,000 meals to help conquer childhood hunger. We're looking forward to our winter break. We hope that you enjoy your holiday season and have a happy new year. Thank you.
Thank you. Julia?
Good evening, school board. I would like to start by mentioning the great work that National Honor Society has done with their annual gift drive this year. The National Honor Society bought and wrapped gifts for more than 100 families for the holiday season. With the help of Student Senate, they also provided these families with toiletries. Additionally, as an update, the two schools in Texas affected by Hurricane Harvey received their school supplies from NHS this week. And NHS has done a great job making a difference this school year. Thank you to all those who donated to these efforts. Continuing with the spirit of giving, the Future Business Leaders of America is hosting its annual dodgeball tournament in the gym tomorrow during fourth block in order to raise money for the Alzheimer's Association. Many teams signed up and it should be a fun time to see these teams of students and even teachers compete tomorrow. Today and yesterday, there was an extended homeroom for the winter concerts held by the music department. The string orchestra, jazz band, and chorus showed off their talents to their peers and they played a variety of songs. Everyone really enjoyed the concert, especially hearing some of the holiday classics. Tonight, the Fords basketball plays up a derby. The girls varsity team is away and their games started at 7:00 PM while the boys are playing at home and their game started at 7:30. Hopefully, both teams are winning at this point. Lastly, seniors are busy finishing up their last college applications over the next couple weeks and students have been working hard so far this quarter and they look forward to win a break. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You guys are welcome to sneak out now or if you'd like, you could stay for as much of the enrollment projection presentation as you'd like to.
Decisions, decisions.
Thanks, girls. Have a great holiday.
You too.
The conference agenda item, enrollment projections 2018-19. Dr. Rucci and Ms. Nicole Battistelli.
This one? Oh, okay. Thank you. Yep, great. Thank you. Here we are back again at this time of the year, looking at our enrollment projection or forecast, if you will. I'm going to take just a few minutes at the beginning of the presentation and explain to you how these numbers are calculated. And then Nicole is going to take it away with looking at exactly what the projections are. As our coordinator of pupil services, Nicole has responsibility for registration and looking at enrollments among the other, you know, other duties that you will see her here making presentations throughout the year. But registration and enrollment fall under her area of responsibility. So, in order to calculate these projections, there are several data points that we take a look at. Number one, we look at the 2000 and the 2010 census data. We look at data from the American Community Service, which is mandatory ongoing statistical survey that really does a sampling of a percentage of the population every year. That gives us, you know, certainly more current information than we would get given that the census was administered back in 2010. Then we also take a look based on that, what, the population of the community, what is the enrollment as a share of that total school age? So of all of the school-aged children within the township, what is the percentage that we consistently see coming into our, into our schools? Then we look at the actual enrollment history. And then there's a statistical calculation that I'm going to say, Mr. Hopkins applies, but there, a statistical calculation referred to as cohort survival method. I'll very briefly describe that for you when we get to that particular piece. So, I mentioned both census and the American Community Survey data and that's what's presented for you up here. So, we look at, this is within Haverford Township, broken down by age groups, residents who are under five, ages five to nine, and then moving all the way through until you get to that highlighted area down towards the bottom, school-aged population, ages five to 19. So, some interesting things that we take a look at as we look at that, at that data there. The school-aged population has been growing moderately over that, over that period of time. But what's of interest, if you look at, and I'm just going to be, you know, traditional numbers here, but if you look at what would traditionally be identified as typically around the childbearing years, and we say, let's span it out, 24 to 44. It could be any period of time within there. That population is actually declining, slightly, but there is a decline there. What that indicates to us is that we are able to get more of the school-aged population who are actual residents in the township are choosing to send their children to Haverford Public Schools. So, and that's one example of the way that we use this data set and part of the overall calculation that is generated. We then, and as I mentioned, look at the, you can move on, look at the enrollment as a share of our total school-aged population. So when we look at those numbers that we have in our elementary buildings, middle and high school, and then what percentage of the population? So, there are residents in kindergarten through fifth grade, with the average would be about 2,815. We get about 5.8% as that total share of the, in complete population. Where, so we're looking at growth in that area as well. When we look over time from 2000 to 2015, growth from 4.9% to 5.8% of those students coming to us. And then we move on to, alright, so with some of that, what has, historically, what have our enrollment numbers looked like? And you can see over the last four, or last three years and then our current year, what each one of the elementary buildings housing kindergarten through fifth grade, our middle school housing grades six, seven, and eight, and the high school, our students typically in grades nine through 12. So we take, everything that you have seen to date is all used here in the, in the calculation to make those, to make those projections. So, then what is applied, as I mentioned, is a cohort survival method in order to make that comparison. So, we're going to take a look each year at the number of students who are in a particular grade at a particular point in time, and then that following year, how many of them actually moved on to that next grade? So, for example, if we said there were 100 students in second grade at one of our schools and the following year, there were 95 in third grade. So, the cohort survival ratio for that would be .95. That's applied for every single grade level, for every single year. And then that statistical model is used to produce for, you know, for you, the progression ratio. You can then apply that going back to, alright, what's the birth data, you know, looking at what are, historically, what our numbers have looked like, apply that ratio to them and that's what is then used to make the, to make the projections. So, there is a science to it, but again, we're dealing with human beings, so there's also some, you know, some uncertainty.
Well, and there's a little bit of art to it because we've got these progression ratios going back 25 years. You know how I love my spreadsheets and so. And then the question is, in the last couple of years, particularly birth to K and K to first grade, we had this dramatic upsurge in the progression ratios. And as a forecaster, you look at that and when you see a very dramatic jump, and these were, it was the highest in 25 years. Is there a reason for that? Is it a one-time anomaly? Was there something going on that could explain that huge jump? Is that likely to be replicated? And so the challenge here was, from a forecasting standpoint, you never want to use one year's worth of data. You want to use a time series and the question is, do you use a three-year or a five-year and how far do you go back? So, we decided, we thought the last five years, the average of those progression ratios was the most representative in terms of going forward. And that's really kind of the art of this. And we tried different, we tried a three-year, we tried a 10-year, and we tried a five-year. And the five-year, to us, now, we may turn out to be wrong, but I think having five years of data, we don't want to overstate the importance of two years ago, but we also want to understand, because we started coming back down this year. So, we took this big jump and we started coming back down and that's the uncertain part of, the birth part in this township is pretty easy. We average about 620 births. That number has been very gradually going down for 25 years. So, we don't, as Marie talked about, what's happening here is the people who are living in the township who have school-aged children, a higher percentage of them are deciding to send them to public schools. I mean, it's just, it's that simple. Are we a victim of our own success? Yeah, probably. But that's the, that's the challenge.
So, with all of that, that I had, you know, said as an intro to it, that's all of the mathematics behind it. Nicole will now take you forward in looking at what the actuals were for 1718, making our projections for 1819, which is what our principals use right away to start the budget process. Alright, that's, it's important data for them to have as they begin that budgeting process. For our purposes, we are also then looking at projecting out like, over the next seven to eight years, when does a build, when is a building at its max? And that's some of the things that Nicole will show you.
Okay. Alright, so this is the enrollment projection. The first column is the projections we had last year for this current school year. And at the bottom, you can see the actual enrollment for this school year as of October. And really, we're pretty close. We're only 46 students off. So, last year when I presented on this, we had to really look at some elementary schools and specifically kindergarten because we had plus 20, plus 23 over our projections. That's not the case this year. We had 30 students total over projection or over the projected number throughout all five elementary schools. So that is really insignificant when you think about that. 46 students total over all of our buildings that came in over our projections. I'm going to go into more detail about these projections over the next few slides. So, we're looking just at the elementary schools, what was projected versus the actual numbers. And they're pretty close. You can see that Chatham had 17 extra students, that's where we saw the biggest chunk at the elementary school. But compared to last year's numbers in the kindergarten and first grade area, it's really not as significant. As Dr., Mr. Hopkins brought up, we were looking at last year's numbers coming into kindergarten and first grade and saying, is this a one-year anomaly or is this the new normal? So, it seems we have to look at it over a few years, but right now, it's not the case this school year. Oh, yes. And then at Cooperstown, we moved some special education programs to Cooperstown from Manoa. So that kind of accounts for the numbers there. So, we moved our autistic support program and the PDP program there. And that is almost equal to the number of students that we're seeing at Cooperstown over the projection. The next slide compares new students entering first grade last year to this year. Again, not a huge change, although in the past, we would typically see 80 new students coming into first grade. So, we're going to keep looking at this. You know, last year was over by 37 students, this year it's over by 24. If we continue to see it over 20 to 30 students, we're going to have to look at those numbers and see if this is the new trend with first grade.
And this affirms a point I talked about. We had that very high progression ratio two years ago and then it came down. And that's what these numbers are saying is that we had this huge surge and we think that we're kind of reverting back to what's a more normal situation and that's, that proves it out, yeah.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Do you think it's possible that some of these entering first grade numbers are due to families choosing to send their children to full-day kindergarten programs outside of the district?
It could be, yeah, absolutely. The next slide is what we call kindergarten registration wild card. So kindergarten registration is something we have to look at very closely every year because we plan, we look at the number of students that enroll typically, you know, February, that first week, we get, we'll say 90% of them, but then we could hit August and have 20 to 20-some appointments for kindergarten registration. So, I look at these numbers from the start of registration on, but that's the wild card. We just have to keep watching kindergarten registration. But again, what was projected last year versus what was enrolled was pretty close. So this slide looks a little bit more closely at the elementary projections and I highlighted in red where the buildings will have their highest number of students. You can see right now, Manoa is actually at the biggest it will be and that's because of the big fifth grade class we have at Manoa that will be rolling into the middle school next year. This is pretty close to what was projected last year. So, when I compared the presentation from last year to this year, there wasn't a significant change anywhere. So, while some buildings might get tight, it's, they, it trickles down over time as And the next slide is the secondary focus. So, this is the middle school and high school. And you can see in 22, 23, the middle school will be at its largest at 1619 and at 25, 26, the high school with 2142. And again, this is not a significant change from what was projected last year. So this is something we've been aware of as we looked at projections last year and this year. And going forward, we're going to continue to monitor the kindergarten registration. We're wondering if more, last year we posed the question, are more kindergarteners starting with us because we had such a huge number over what we projected? But really, the numbers from this year were pretty close to projections. So, it may have been a one... So it may have been a one-time thing. Again, we'll keep looking at that. Are more first graders coming to us? The numbers from last year and this year are pretty close. And we're going to have to talk about high school, middle school, building utilization. Do you want me to go back to the slide?
We'll go back to slide number 11. Thanks.
So one of the other pieces that we also talk about at this time is building, building utilization. And, you know, each time now that I've been here with you, I have said, our elementary buildings are going to be a little bit tight. And, and they certainly are. There is no doubt, you know, no doubt about that. But once again, when you look at those numbers, let's take Chatham Park, for example. Six, the projection of 629 students in the year '21, '22. Those students will be spread over a number of classes. That's not going to be all, you know, all at one, at one grade level. So what are some of the things that we may do? And we started this, this past year. New families moving in may be told, depending on when they register, may be told, we don't have room at this school, we have room at another school in that, in that particular grade level. That has happened to us, particularly with Chestnut Wald, and Cooper Town is the place that we would, would send students. So if there's a very late enrollment, our classes are set. And we have a student arrive, and that's going to put us over our guidelines. Certainly no fault of the parents. That's when they arrived in, in the district. But for us to upset, create a new section, take the kids who have already been assigned to classrooms, put them into new classrooms, and find another classroom in these buildings. So the point that we are at right now is, I cannot go to a building principal in the middle of August and say, create another classroom. They don't have them sitting there waiting. But when we sit and look at numbers in June, and they have to get creative about the use of space, some of them can do that. Some a little bit, some buildings are easier to do that in than, than others. But once that is set, you know, as I said, then to go back in the middle of August and say, well, now we have to create a classroom somewhere. That's the unfortunate situation where we may have to tell someone who's new into the community, as we did, you know, with a few in Chestnut Wald, we don't have the room right here. You're going to have to go over to Cooper Town. And we have been able to bring students back to Chestnut Wald in the following year. So it's not that they're going to, you know, have to stay in that school for the, for the entire time. When we get to the high school and middle school, though, if you can move to the next one, thanks. When we get to the high school and middle school, we have to watch here, because while we say, you know, 2,100 students, that's going to be a lot in our high school. We can't just look at '25, '26, the, the school year, '25, '26. We have to look at where the, where is the big bubble of the growth going to occur. So we're going to have to start to get now, creative with the use of space at the middle and high school, similar to the way the elementary buildings have for the last three to four years, looking at how spaces is utilized there. So we will have to be looking at what are the number of classrooms that we're going to, to need? How can we maybe utilize current space that's there in a, in a different way? I'm not saying that we're going to be looking at doing any adding on to the high school in terms of construction, or adding on to the middle school in terms of, of construction. I believe when the middle school renovation occurred, there was always in the mindset of those involved at that time, that there was a possibility that the enrollment would increase at the, at the middle school. So this may mean repurposing space that, you know, that is already there. I'm also not saying that we're going to need to look at building a new elementary school to accommodate the number of students who, who are there. What I will say is, as, you know, these numbers are pretty consistent. Our schools are pretty full. Even when they're not at, at the highest peak that, that is projected, they are pretty full. What we do need to look at in terms of our facilities planning and moving forward are those common spaces, like cafeterias, gymnasiums, that are not adequate in terms of the numbers of students that are now occupying, occupying those buildings. So that's part of, that's where the enrollment impacts the facilities work for us, along with just making sure that we're doing maintenance and upkeep of the systems and the mechanicals that are in that building. How is the space being utilized, and what space is needed? Because those buildings look like they're going to be staying as rather large elementary schools for a sustainable period of time. No one's dropping down to, you know, 300, and now we're going to go down to 375 students in the, in the school. There's, you know, just some slight variations there.
And what the, what's interesting about the cohort survival or the progression ratios, once we get the students here, they enter in first grade, then we keep them. Because those ratios stay constant over time. So once they're here, they're going to go through the system. There are several transition years where they can jump around, you know, five to, five to six is always a transition year, because you have entering students, maybe coming from parochial schools, eight to nine is another one. But the point is that once we have them, they're going to be here for the duration, and that's the challenge. If you look at the enrollments currently, we have five, we have three grades, the elementary grades, where we have more than 500 students district-wide. And I looked at numbers going back to like 1980. And we haven't had three grades with over 500 students, or one at 496 in, in 20 years. So that's, that's the problem, is this bulge moving through the district.
And they're also coming to us. If you look, Nicole talked about, you know, 46 new, you know, new students coming, coming, or over the projections. Well, our largest influx of students is at our high school. There are over 20 new students into, into the high school. So they're not only coming, staying with us when they start, but they're entering in at those key transition years. There's an increase there as well.
And there's another whole part to this that they've seen, and we won't bore you with. But it will actually forecast out average class size, shortage of rooms by grade, by school district, out 15 years. So we've got a pretty good sense going all the way out about where we're going to be short classrooms, where we're not, and so forth. So this is more than just a forecasting tool, it's also a space planning tool. And, you know, I know Nicole's been playing around with the other parts of it. And that's what we created, is to do this and say, okay, the numbers, but it also depends on which school they're at. And so it's a tool I hopefully have had a little fun with.
I'm going to kind of bring another realm into this, just to throw it out. I don't have an answer, I'm just throwing these numbers out. Since 2010, we've gone from 54, 50 students to about 6,100. I'm looking anecdotally in my street, I have no idea if this is a fact, that the average number of children per family is going down slowly. Which that means, if that's correct, that means we have more families involved in the schools today than we did 10 years ago. Okay? Now, I'm going to work on assumption with our 6,000 children. The average family has 1.2 kids in the school. So every fourth family has two kids in the school, one in middle school, someone else. Maybe it's less. So that would mean that there's right now about 5,000 families which, who have a child in the school. There's 15,000 households in the township. Think about that. So only, even at this point, only one-third of the households in the township have a child in the schools. And the next projection is, I'll just pull out of air, maybe 50 to 60% ever will. So I just threw out to you folks the thing to think about, inherent support for an excellent school system. That's what school boards do, guys. Can we deal with that?
Well, and if you look at the information that Mr. Hopkins provided, where it's broken down by age groupings, the growth is with senior citizens. The growth in the township is the senior citizen population.
It's been that way for a while, hasn't it?
Yeah, yeah.
Which I think's interesting.
And Joe's right, average household size in this country is declining. We're just getting a dramatically larger share of them who are saying, like the family that, that bought my house. They're, you know, they're coming over to, to Chatham, and we've got two kids coming in. That's the turnover that's happening.
I'm going to just state an uncomfortable truth. It is the job of the school district, school board, if nobody else, to convince the people who are not getting a direct benefit from the schools that this is worth it.
I will also tell you, when we had our house on the market, you remember the, the chart where we had the scores with the, with the elementary schools and how well we did? And Chatham was number one. Well, my school is in the Chatham, Catchman area. I had that chart right on the table, so when the families walked in, they could see it. And the family that bought our house, she's a teacher. And I asked her, was that a, you know, a big deal, a deciding factor? And she said, absolutely. I know I'm going to a really good school.
Are the kindergarten numbers in the elementary numbers as well, so the, like, the registration? But they're only attending for half a day, right? So does that matter in terms of the progression, you know, those numbers for the elementary?
No, because it's actually AM and PM.
Right? Okay.
The count is people, not half people.
Right, okay. No, I know, I know. I'm not saying that. No, I know that.
Yeah.
I soon to have a kindergarten. I know, she's definitely not half a person. But I was just looking in terms of space and availability and those kinds of things. I mean, does it, does it affect it that much, or is it?
Well, where it would affect it is if we were to go to full-day, full-day kindergarten.
Right, okay.
And you, you know, I'm sure from your experiences, no, that's, that doubles your space usage.
Right, okay.
Sal, and to your point, one of the other things we have to take into account is, for those kids who are born, what particular elementary school do they show up in five years later? So we actually look at the shares going back the last 10 years. On average, for kids born five years later, which elementary school do they show up in? Because once they're in the, in the school, then we progress them through.
Okay.
And so we, we took the ratio, the average ratio of the last five years to make sure that we didn't want to have, overestimate the kids showing up at Chatham and underestimating those in Cooper Town.
Right, okay. Thanks.
Any other questions from the board?
So wait, wait, yeah. So since it's a proven fact that Chatham has the smartest neighborhood, then I should invest in rental property in that district, because I'll make a lot of money with fertile families.
Okay.
Okay.
That was my experience.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hey, somebody's going to make money out of this.
So one takeaway from this discussion, principals, is if you could knock the test scores down a little bit, you know, you'd be... Okay, on to the business meeting, yes?
Yes.
I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the December 4th, 2017 annual reorganization meeting.
Moved. Second discussion?
Any discussion?
Thank you. So on, in our last meeting on December 7th, I brought up some of my concerns I had with this December 4th meeting and the substance of the vote that occurred on that evening. And on the 7th, I did mention that new board members had just been sworn in. We did not have an agenda prior to that meeting. And also per our board policy, we require 24 hours' notice before holding any votes. And we did not have that on the December 4th meeting. In the meantime, though, Dr. Rucci has provided us with the written fee agreements that we voted on, so I wanted to thank you for that. But one thing stood out for me in particular, the Katania and Parker agreement was dated December 5th. So my question is, what exactly did the board vote on on December 4th? And is that vote, in fact, valid? So in addition to my question, as I've been educating myself, you know, to my roles and responsibilities as a board member, something, something came to light that I do have some questions about as well. Mr. Parker is currently our in-house counsel. He is our HR director, and he's also our external counsel as our board solicitor. So he is a district employee. And as I was reading our conflict of interest policy, we are prohibited from entering into contracts with employees unless we determine it's in the best interest of our school district. And if that contract is valued at $500 or more, and per the fee agreement we received from Mr. Parker's firm, he's, he will be billing us a rate of $150 per hour, so it will be quite easy to get to the $500 limit. That contract needs to be, be put out for public and open bidding. So I'm wondering when the last time was that this contract was put out to bid. Something I would like to ask is that we place a temporary extension on this contract until we, as a board, have access to more information, financial disclosures, as Mr. Parker is a partner at the law firm Parker and Katania, or Katania and Parker. I think the board should also see the employment contract for his two roles that he serves in our school district, and any other relevant information, and that this contract can be put out for open bid.
In terms of finances, for the current year, I believe that payments to Katania and Parker have totaled $1,200. And that in each of the prior two years, there were, there was nothing spent. In terms of value to this board, I can tell you that I have worked with Mr. Parker for the last 18 years, and he's an invaluable resource to this district. Generally, if we don't, if, no one has said to me that Mr. Parker, Mark, Mr. Parker's performance is harming the district. On the contrary, by my own observations at board meetings for the past 18 years, I have enormous respect for him professionally. And he's been of great value to this district. I'm not sure why there is this sudden interest in bidding this contract. I hope that it's not at the impetus of a political organization or a political party. I know that in Upper Darby, for instance, which has been a very political school district, I've had the pleasure of working with most of the members of their school board, both the Rs and the Ds. And although all of them have been focused on what's best for kids, I can best describe the relationship of the board members as poisoned by political issues. You know, I, I, I don't know what our responsibility is in this case, and whether there is a reason to rebid this contract. I would prefer not to. Every reorganization meeting since the beginning of time in this district, I believe, has voted on these professional services contracts. The, the nature of what we do here as a school board is not based upon when new, new board members arrive here. It's based upon running the district. You know, we can discuss this further. The contracts certainly are available for you to look at, and the, the employment contract is available for you to look at. You know, again, 20, 20 or so years ago, there was a grassroots effort in this township to get politics out of the school district. And it was just as passionate and just as successful as the HCAN group is right now. We had 400 people on the mailing list. We had people work every, every precinct and every pole to make, to make school board elections non-political. And I hope that's not where we're going here.
Mr. Feinberg, with all due respect, I'm just raising a question to ensure that we are in compliance with our own conflict of interest policy. This has nothing to do with politics. I simply was alerted to this particular contract when I saw that we had voted on it on the 4th, but the written fee agreement I was handed was dated December 5th. And then through further investigation, I said, as well educating myself about this role, I was handed a handbook about our, our procedures as board members. And this is explicitly stated in our policy. And I will remind us that one of our duties, in addition to supporting our schools, our families, our children, we also are accountable to the taxpayers, and we are beholden to Pennsylvania law. And this conflict of interest policy is derived from Pennsylvania Ethics Code.
We can discuss this further at the appropriate time. There's a motion and a second to approve the minutes, not to discuss the contract. Is there any other discussion at this time? All in favor of approving the minutes?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item number five, I'll accept a motion to approve the official minutes from the December 7th, 2017 regular public board meeting.
Moved. Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number six, I'll accept a motion to approve budget transfers in the amount of $236,500. $236,571.
Moved.
Second.
Discussion? Do we have any detail available tonight? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number seven, I'll accept a motion to ratify dispersments totaling $2,244,980.90 for general fund expenditures.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Mr. Feinberg, I'm not sure, is number five, the budget transfers, a roll call vote?
Yes, it is. Thank you.
Number six.
Dr. Ellen Stock?
Aye.
Dr. Oh, Mr. Hopkins?
Yes.
Ms. Larson?
Yes.
Dr. Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Minji?
Yes.
Mr. Cento?
Yes.
Mr. Feinberg?
Yes. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Item number eight, I'll accept a motion to approve ACH payments in the amount of $3,558,837.77 from the general fund account.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number nine, I'll accept a motion to approve bills presented on check register, checks number 119757 through 119879, dated December 22nd, 2017, totaling $604,413.29, and authorize proper officers of the board to pay these bills from the general fund account.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 10, I'll accept a motion to approve the standard agreements made between the Timothy School and the School District of Haverford Township to provide educational services to five special education students. Student numbers 56453, 56843, 56844, and 57403, and 56133, for the 2017-18 school year, at a cost not to exceed $71,000 per student, for a total of $355,000, subject to legal review.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 11, I'll accept a motion to approve a consulting agreement between the School District of Haverford Township and Logic to provide consulting services to complete specific financial projects, as identified by the school district, for a term starting January 1st, 2018, through the end of the calendar year, at a rate of $80 per hour, not to exceed 200 hours, subject to legal review.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 12, I'll accept a motion to approve a revision to the agreement with the Chester County Intermediate Unit to provide professional consulting services, at an amount not to exceed $20,000, subject to legal review.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 13, I'll accept a motion to accept the resignation of Mr. Philip Hopkins from the School District Board of Directors, effective as of December 31st, 2017.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
If I might, I don't know if this is the right time. I have, I have a feeling I'm the, I have known you the longest of everybody on this board.
Probably.
Because I started to teach his daughter when she was in second grade, Kelly, who is now an opera singer in Berrytown, right?
And she's 40...
Don't say that.
She's 40 years old.
40 years old. So, I knew him as a parent first, and his lovely wife. I got to help the family transition with Jen and with Matt.
Right, yeah.
And I have just loved the Hopkins forever. And when he became a school board member, I still remember, I was a teacher at Cooperstown, and he was standing by a wall, and I walked by him, I said, "Are you gonna win?" He said, "I'm gonna win. It's gonna be great." And he was right. So, I, on behalf of all the teachers and staff, I've 37 years myself, so, all the people that I worked with, always, always, we've thanked you for all of the hard work you've put in, and all of the wonderful things that you've done for the children of, of Haverford Town, and for us, the adults, the community, really. We're going to miss you, Phil, and I thank you.
I have some remarks at the end, but I appreciate that. It's been, it's been, it's been a pleasure.
Absolutely.
I don't know if it's necessary. I have an empty nest. My two kids live up in the Patriot Red Sox Nation, so anytime you need a room, you got one. That's all I can say. I mean, I've known you long enough, I certainly can trust you.
Yeah, we go back a lot of years.
I can trust you.
A lot of years.
You want a key? Just a key?
Go back with Greg probably 20, 20 years.
Yeah, that's true, Phil.
I also wanted to thank Phil. I describe you as one of the smartest men I know, seriously, because the things that you've brought to the board, your insights, I never really knew an economist in real life. And what you bring to the board with your projections and your financial know-how, and how you can use the social science of economics to explain to us what's happening in the district, what's happening in trends, how it impacts our P's and scores, you know, like, you bring so much to this board, because you're so well-read, you're so knowledgeable, you care so much about this work, and you're just such a great role model. So, I just can't thank you enough.
Well, thank you. As, as may the board members know, I'm fortunate enough to do the kind of work I do in economic development and education, that part of what I do every day carries over into here. And the board is used to getting research papers from me about the most recent developments in educational attainment and the relationship between economic growth and so forth. And, you know, we've traded papers a number of times, Kim.
It's like an accountant with a personality.
Yeah, right.
So, I second with regret.
Okay.
You know, I, I learned early on in my board tenure, that if I had any questions having to do with numbers, that I could, I could email Phil a question at 11 o'clock at night, and when I got up in the morning, there'd be a warm spreadsheet waiting for me. And, you know, it's, you know, his professional expertise has just simply been invaluable. And his passion for public education surpasses his, his professional qualifications. So, Phil, we'll, we will certainly miss you.
I told Maureen, if you need some help on the enrollment projections next year, give me a call. I mean, I'm always happy to help.
And as an aside here, if there's any numbers, numbers people out in the township that are interested in applying for the vacant board position, we could use, we could use some financial and numbers help. We won't be able to replace you, Phil. Thanks for everything. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 14, I'll accept a motion to adopt a resolution naming Susan Minji as a candidate to serve as a member of the Delaware County Intermediate Unit Board of Directors, for a term commencing December 22nd, 2017, and ending June 30th, 2020.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Congratulations, or condolences, however you want to take that. Susan, we know you'll do a great job for us.
Thank you.
You're a perfect fit for the job.
Thank you. I'm looking forward to it.
And when we have our breakfast, right?
We'll talk about it.
Exactly.
The only thing I want to say is, I have always looked at this job through the special education lens, so I'm very happy to be able to at least bring what I, what I have learned, and hopefully learn some more, and help the board that way.
And as I understand it, there was a lot of turnover in the IU board, so it'll be even more important for the IU board to have somebody with your background, yeah.
Thank you.
Thanks for stepping up, Susan.
Absolutely.
Item number 15, I'll accept a motion to approve the appointment of Ari Fleischer to serve as liaison to the Board of Trustees of the Delaware County Community College.
Approved.
Second.
Moved.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Item number 16, food services. I'll accept a motion to ratify dispersments from the Food Service Fund totaling $77,172, and to approve the bill list, checks number 2540 through 2561, totaling $68,936.19, dated December 2017.
Moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Superintendent's report, Dr. Ruscia.
Thank you, Mr. Feinberg. I ask you to accept the retirements that are noted in item number one.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Like to thank both of these employees for their long-term service.
And we, for the benefit of folks who are just joining us, we do send communication. There's a letter that goes out from my office to each retiring person, and if they're still around in the district, then I stop over to see them as well. I ask you to accept the resignation in number two.
Moved.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
I ask you to approve the appointments that are listed in item 3A through 3D.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And I ask you to approve the leaves of absence that are described in items 4A through 4C.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Item five, I ask you to approve the professional employee contracts with the employees noted in item, in item five.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
And finally, item six, I ask that you adopt the, approve the adoption of the High School Course Selection Guide for 2018-19, as was presented at the meeting on December 7th.
Move.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Dr. Ruscia. Item number 18, board reports. Joe, you got anything for us this evening?
Um, I guess, sort of, I'm personally in the professional talent development business. That's what I do. And this is a very strange superintendent reporters. The first one I've seen in months that doesn't have an orange resume of some outstanding person we recruited. And so, the exception proves the rule. So, what I'm trying to say is, is that whatever it is that the district does to bring in the best people, by the same token, the best people want to work here, I congratulate you, and I want another couple, I want somebody to quit, so I can have the pleasure of reading another sterling resume in two weeks.
We don't want people to quit.
That's what I do.
Keep the people we have.
Thanks, Joe. Anything else?
That's it. That's more than enough.
So, Al, do you have anything this evening?
Uh, yeah, I had the opportunity to attend the Elementary District Music Concert on Tuesday. I just wanted to give congratulations to all the music teachers in the district. The students involved, congratulations to all of you. It was a wonderful presentation. And it's so nice to see collaboration among all of the music faculty. It really is nice to see them all come together. There were teachers from various elementary schools that came together, as well as some of the middle, the middle school teachers as well who helped out. So, congratulations to all of them. It was great.
Thanks, Al. Kristen, anything?
No report.
Jim?
I think I'll mention there's a basketball tournament going on at the high school over the winter break. If anybody wants to come by and check it out, it should be pretty exciting. I will be in Snack Shack, Snack Shack, for at least one of the games, yes.
Susan?
No.
No report.
All right, Phil. So, yours.
Well, so this is last night after 24 years, and that also includes 20 years, the IU rep. I don't know how many meetings that is. But just a couple of things, as I told the new board members, and I hope it's been evident to everybody that's been watching, coming to meetings for all this time, that I hope you enjoy being a school board member as much as I have. And as I said in my note to Maureen in the resignation, if you can't get excited about public education, because most of what we deal with as a society in some way ends up kind of coming through this room, you know, what do we teach our kids? What do we want them to be? Political issues, economic issues. When I was first elected to the board in 1985, one of the first issues we had to deal with, HIV/AIDS, you know, how do we, as a society, deal with that? I was elected, some of you will remember, A Nation at Risk, and, you know, that kind of publication. No Child Left Behind, all of that. So, you know, it really becomes who you are and what you are. I just want to read off the names of some of the people I, I served with, because I've had the opportunity to, to serve with some wonderful people over the years, and I hope I don't miss anybody. But a lot of the names will be familiar to many of you. Maureen McGuire, Dick Giangilio, Republicans and Democrats all, Ellen Holland, who was a wonderful member of this board for years, Maxine Murdoch, of course, Jim, Patty, Dennis, Russ, you know, the current board, Tom Rogers, Mary Wachterhauser, Teresa O'Brien, you know, the list goes on. And I think the township's been blessed to have people who have been committed to public education, who has served this district well, and overwhelmingly rise to the occasion, taken to consideration the importance of public education and what our roles are. I do want to talk a little bit, and Larry referenced CQE, and in light of the remarks that were made earlier this evening, which I think are inappropriate and disrespectful and too political, I want to just say a couple of things. A group of us established Citizens for Quality Education about 20 years ago, and we had a goal in mind, which is to keep politics out of education. We went to both political parties and said, "Stay out. We'll give you good schools. We'll appoint good people. We won't tell them what to do, and we will give you a good education, an excellent education. We will do it at an affordable cost, and we will keep the politics out of it." When I first got on the board, we would get resumes in the door, and some of you will remember, for, you know, people who wanted jobs and so forth. We were very selective about the kind of people that we looked for. Of course, we wanted committed to public education. But no elected officials. That includes council people, committee people, also include your spouse. So, if you were an elected official, we didn't want you. If your spouse was an elected official, we didn't want you. Unfortunately, you know, that landscape has changed. We wanted people who would work collaboratively. We wanted a representative group of people representing all aspects of this community, Republican, Democrat, young, old, you know, whatever diversity we could find. We sometimes didn't get the diversity we would like to have had, because some people weren't able to serve. You know, so we've had accounts, we've had lawyers, we've had IT people, we've had educators. And I think it's important, when you're dealing with public education, to have a school board that's representative of the community that it serves. And, and that includes political diversity. So, the question then is, how did we do? And Larry and I were having this discussion recently. We've had a 20-year run that was, I think, kind of unprecedented in southeastern Pennsylvania. I saw it because I served in the intermediate unit. Larry sees it because he gets around the state. You know, I can tell you, sit at the intermediate unit, and you know who's voting for so-and-so, and somebody would come up to me and say, "Well, you know, I'm really getting a lot of pressure on voting for this job. How come you guys don't get that pressure in Haverford?" And I said, "The answer is very simple. We kept the politics out of it. We didn't have anybody telling us how to vote. We played it straight up." So, we were unique, I think, you know, Larry, you've seen it around the state, probably, certainly unique in this county, and maybe... certainly unique in this county, and maybe unique in, in, you know, in a good part of the state. So what did we give you? High educational achievement, the test scores and any academic measure speaks for itself. You know, top 10 in the state, continued presence on the SAT honor rolls, music in the arts, you know, it's been a balanced curriculum. You know, some of the programs that started, you know, the Heart Program, the Advisory Program, we were one of the first districts to have a gay, straight alliance, you know, we've been a district that's been ahead of the, ahead of the curve, so to speak. We became a place where educators wanted to come, because they knew that if they came here, we would let them do their jobs. And that's not always the case in all districts, and I've seen it up close. We gave you stability. You can look all around you with districts where there's 5.4 and 4.5 and turnover, and, you know, I've had, you know, people said some things, and, you know, we've got some emails, particularly one that I would call a disgraceful one on Election Day, from somebody who was a little too excited. Did we control the Board? Sure. But what we gave you was a great educational system with terrifically talented people who were bipartisan but not political. Probably what I'm most proud of of this district is that, and I'll try not to lapse into econ speak, we give you very good value for the money. And what I did recently is I took all the data from every test in every school district in the state of Pennsylvania and looked at not only what's our achievement in terms of percent of advanced and proficient on tests, but what do we spend to get that? So Radnor may have more kids, you know, a higher overall percent advanced and proficient, but they spend $6,000 more a student. And when you divide that through, we are a much more educationally efficient district because we get, we spend much less for every point we're above the state average. So, you know, CQE, it was probably too good to last as we talked, Larry, but it's been an organization, you know, we rebuilt the infrastructure of this school, the entire school district. We have mostly a new high school, a completely renovated middle school, two new elementary schools at a total cost of, you know, $200 million. So I think we have a lot to be proud of. And I just, given what's happened over the last year, I felt that the, the commitment and the accomplishments of CQE had been unfairly tarnished and maligned. I'm nervous about what I see as increasing political intrusion coming back into the school district. I think that's a really bad thing. I've seen it up close for 20 years. I don't think it has any place here. I hope it doesn't continue, but, you know, I guess we will see going forward. But in closing, it's been my honor, it's been my privilege to work with the friends on the Board, the friends in the administration, Greg and I go back a lot of years, Susan, I've served under five superintendents. This is a wonderful district. My three kids went through it. I'll always be indebted to this district, and anything I can do to help it, I'd be happy to do that. So, thank you, I'm not going to go far away, but it's been a wonderful ride, and I've enjoyed it.
As you know, the tax bill is now law.
They're pointing to me, and I've been looking around because we have a picture framed floating from Mr. Hopkins. Looking back to see where it was.
What am I not seeing?
Mr. Hopkins, as you know, has been the tradition within, within the district here for a long period of time, I don't know how long it goes back, but we have their drawing of one of the schools and recognition of the years that you have served on the school.
Phil, if we let you live there, you'll still be in the district.
I've got a spot on the wall for it. Thank you very much.
Certainly.
It's great. I've enjoyed it. Here we are.
Picture.
I just want to let you know, that's okay, countywide, Delaware County School Board's Legislative Council met on, I believe, the 13th of December, and we looked at doing a couple of things. One was to encourage our superintendent's Board Presidents and Board members countywide to reach out to their, to their legislators, asking them to oppose the tax bill. We were able to put together a fairly concise list of four or five ways that the, the tax bill would negatively impact public education. That was published as a letter to the editor in the Delco Times last Thursday or Friday, and was also on the American Association of School Administrators website the same day, and was picked up and published in the Harrisburg Patriot News, I believe, on Monday. We also contacted his office and asked if we could send a delegation to speak with him about those particular issues, and he was kind enough to meet with us on Monday morning before he left for Washington. The Board Presidents from William Penn, Upper Darby, and School Board members from Radnor and Garnet Valley attended that meeting, as did the Legislative Director from the Montgomery County Intermediate Unit, who happened to be, in a prior lifetime, was the President of the Cheltenham School Board. And they, they had a, you know, they met with Congressman Mead and, and went over the impact that this bill would have on, on our public schools and our taxpayers, and he pretty much said he was voting for the bill, so it's unfortunate. You know, I, I know that, I think we're going to be seeing other effects from this legis, over a thousand-page piece of legislation surface over the next year or so. And, you know, we take it for granted that our public schools are here, and they're going to serve our kids, and I would urge you not to take that for granted, and I would urge you to actively stay engaged with your elected officials to support public education. It is under attack. There's nothing in this tax bill that does anything good for public education, and there are several things that are damaging to public education. Although the Federal Secretary of Education hasn't been able to get any, any of her pet legislation passed individually, she was able to, you know, to get a tax credit provision passed as part of the tax credit bill, so that folks who can afford $10,000 a year to send their kids to private schools can get a tax credit. You know, it, it is, we're, we're seeing similar concerted and, and strong efforts at the state level, the voucher bill, Senate Bill 2, which didn't make it out of committee last month. In the interim, if you can't win the votes, change the players is what has happened. One of the Republican members of the Senate Education Committee who voted against the voucher bill is now off the committee, and he's been replaced by another Senator who just happens to be a co-sponsor of the bill. So we expect that we're going to be fighting the voucher battle all over again. Those of you who have been in education for, you know, for 20 years will remember that this was, this bill, this battle was fought a few times during the Ridge administration and ended up birthing the charter school movement, even though the vouchers were defeated at that time. But it's coming back again. And what it could mean is that our, our public schools, which serve everybody, would be defunded. So I'd urge you to pay attention and stay engaged. So, on that happy note, I'll see if I can read all this chicken scratch here in front of me. The Board met an executive session prior to the public meeting to review personnel issues, including appointments, resignations, and leaves of absence. The Board also reviewed potential litigation with legal counsel and conferred with professional advisors regarding facilities. The Board also met an executive session on December 13th, 2017, to review personnel issues, including employee discipline, pending grievance proceedings, and potential litigation. December 14th? Correct, December 14th, not 13th. Thank you. I'll accept the motion to adjourn.
Moved.
Second.
Thank you.